The March 2nd, 2023, meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. And note the absence of Commissioner Winder today. Commissioner Gale and myself are present. And I'm going to ask our Controller Karen Sanchez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to start my comments today to speak about the SNAP benefit changes that are coming forward, which we'll have a presentation on this later in the agenda as well. But beginning this month, there will be a benefit change that will result in all SNAP households losing a minimum of $95 a month in benefits, with a statewide average impact of $181 per household. During this time of increased food costs, even a minor cut in benefits will be difficult for our neighbors who rely on these funds to feed themselves and their families. We know there will be increased demand on our food pantries who play a critical role in helping our neighbors who don't have enough to eat. Therefore, I am proposing to provide $500,000 for the direct purchase of food for county food pantries. These funds will be coordinated by the Monco Anti-Hunger Network. We anticipated, considering a contract for food purchase at this meeting. However, food pricing is so volatile at this time, we will be issuing an RFP at our next meeting to ensure we get the best pricing and availability on the product to maximize the value of these funds. And I am calling upon all of our local philanthropic organizations, business partners, and everyone who is able to support food pantries in Montgomery County during this time. I'd also like to acknowledge the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board, who is organizing their first-ever spring food drive in addition to their annual fall food drive. As a Commissioner, I participated in the Food Stamp Challenge, which was eating on $4.75 a day, which was the assistance level at that time. It was difficult and eye-opening, but I only did it for a week. We have citizens in Montgomery County who already don't get enough to eat on a daily basis, and they are about to get less. So please help if you can. I'd also like to announce today that the county has updated information on our Boards and Commissions website, including a new application process. Each Board or Commission has an updated description, along with a list of current serving Board members and their term expiration dates. We encourage all residents to consider serving on one of our Boards or Commissions and to apply. After your application is received, we will reach out to confirm your interest and information. Once a Board vacancy is available, we will consider your application. Please note that individuals with expiring terms may be reappointed. All information in the application will be held in the strictest of confidence and will not be shared outside of the application review process without your informed consent. And to see a full list of Boards and Commissions and the application, you can visit www.moncopa.org/boards. And finally, our Montgomery County Public Defender's Office, in partnership with Senator Maria Collette and Representative Nancy Gents and the Legal Aid of Southeastern Pennsylvania, will host a special expungement event on March 14th, 2023, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Upper Moreland Library. Appointments are required. To make an appointment, you can call Senator Collette's office at (215) 368-1429. And please provide your name and date of birth when making an appointment. Only Pennsylvania arrests are eligible. You must have no current criminal charges and must not be serving probation time. Please bring any copies of any records you have regarding your criminal record. Only non-conviction charges, including ARD or summary convictions with no arrests in the past five years, can be expunged. Some misdemeanor convictions may be sealed if 10 years has passed. A criminal record is a significant barrier to employment, housing, and educational opportunities. It can also negatively affect professional licensing, immigration status, motor vehicle license, and access to Medicare, Medicaid, and other public benefits. So if you have a past criminal record, there is help for you to move forward with your life. Stop by this event or attend one of the Montgomery County Public Defender Office Virtual Expungement Clinics on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Information to attend the virtual expungement clinics is located on the Public Defender's website at www.moncopa.org-publicdefender. And finally, regarding public comment rules. Starting today, our Solicitor Josh Stein will no longer be reading the rules for public comment for the public comment section of the Board meetings. The rules for public comment are attached to the agenda, are at the back of the room, and posted on the door, and are on the website at www.moncopa.org-commissioners. The rules are also posted in the chat for our Zoom attendees. Please note that the rules are unchanged. The only change is that the rules are not being read at the beginning of the public comment section. You sure you go?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. At the last Board meeting, I shared details of the career fair-related event that took place in Sallerton. I'd like to share details of another upcoming career fair taking place in Pottstown next week, and that's hosted by the Pennsylvania Career Link. The location will be the Pottstown Cluster of Religious Communities, which is at 61 North Franklin Street in Pottstown. And the date is Thursday, March 9th. It takes place from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and appointments are required to participate. There's a phone number you can call to schedule an appointment. That number is (610) 270-3429. And there'll be people there that can assist you with career navigation, go over job openings in the Montgomery County region, go over labor market information with you, and help you with resume critiquing and any needs you have if you're searching for new employment or unemployed and looking to be employed. So again, this is taking place on Thursday, March 9th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, at the Pottstown Cluster of Religious Communities, which is located at 61 North Franklin Street in Pottstown. And you must make an appointment to participate by calling (610) 270-3429. And I hope the public finds that resource useful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to announcements, and we have Tamara Williams, our Director of Health and Human Services, and Amanda Musselman from the Monco Anti-Hunger Network.
Hi, good morning, and thank you, Commissioner Lawrence, for the update on the SNAP benefits. I think that's very helpful information for people to know about and very relevant to what Amanda and I are going to be talking about today. You can go on to the next slide.
So I'm Dr. Tamara Williams. I'm the Director of Montgomery County's Department of Health and Human Services, and I'm joined by Amanda Musselman, who is the Director of the Monco Anti-Hunger Network. And we want to bring awareness to some trends related to food insecurity in Montgomery County, the potential impact of changes to the federally funded food benefits on older residents and those with disabilities, and also highlight the tremendous work being done here in the county to address those with food and nutrition needs, as well as what people can do to support these efforts. Next slide. So here, as you can see, the county has done a significant amount of work to enhance our food system related to food security and nutrition. This requires a multi-pronged approach, including coordinating across agencies, investing in food storage, streamline transportation and distribution, direct food purchasing of food, and funding to support leadership and infrastructure, the infrastructure needs of food banks for pantries. And so through a combination of county funds, CARES Act money, and ARPA funds, we have been, or will be, able to distribute millions of dollars to support the purchase of some needed things related to our food system, including food for pantries, as well as programs that aid those who need food, and also warehouses for the safe and centralized storage of food. So we've also made some significant investments in providing services and programs, as you'll see on this next slide. The Department of Health and Human Services, through its behavioral health managed care arm, has partnered with the Horticultural Society and Creative Health, which is a mental health provider, to combine education about food and nutrition with mental health services. We've also done some unique things in terms of ways to reduce food waste in a high school so that students who don't want prepackaged, unopened food can put it aside for students who are hungry and who do want it. And then also, HHS's Office of Public Health partnered with a pediatric health clinic and Penny Pack Farm to bring fresh produce to clinic families. Next slide. And again, our Office of Public Health has also led the way in bringing community gardens into communities that provide not just food, but serve as education about healthy food for school-aged children. And then lastly, we have a number of resources on our website. Next slide. So Commissioner Lawrence alluded to this earlier on. So even with all of these resources that we have within the county, there are challenges coming at the federal level that have the potential to negatively impact thousands of households, on top of some of the challenges created by rising food prices. So starting this month, pandemic-related increases to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, those benefits will end. And this was a temporary increase, which provided an extra cushion, if you will, to help families keep food insecurity at bay during the height of the pandemic. In addition, about half of SNAP households also receive SSI. And the recent COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment, applied to SSI without a corresponding adjustment to the income levels that are required to qualify for SNAP means that many will have an income that's considered too high for SNAP benefits and will lose them. So this will impact our most vulnerable residents, including older adults and adults and children with disabilities. It could also mean an increase in the number of people seeking food assistance from pantries who are also experiencing some challenges. And so at this point, I will turn it over to Amanda to talk about some trends in our food pantry system.
Good morning, everyone. Just to add a couple more comments talking about SNAP. SNAP has always been the first line of defense against hunger. For many individuals, especially seniors on fixed incomes, SNAP is a critical lifeline. The Office of Developmental Programs, ODP, anticipates approximately 5,000 to 20,000 households will be disenrolled from SNAP due to the SSI increase. These federal changes will primarily affect older Pennsylvanians and seniors. In a recent study from the University of Michigan, three-quarters of people over the age of 50 say that the rising cost of groceries has affected them somewhat or a lot. And nearly a third say they're eating less healthy because of the increased food cost. And this is of great particular concern to our network. And now with these new SNAP benefit changes in effect, food pantries and soup kitchens across the county are bracing for the potential increase in utilization. Looking at the state of food insecurity in the county, even though the long lines of individuals waiting for food assistance are no longer regularly covered on the news, it does not mean that hunger no longer exists. According to Feeding America's Matt the Meal Gap Report from 2020, 7% of Montgomery County residents are food insecure, and this represents over 50,000 individuals who do not have consistent access to enough food for every person in their household to live an active and healthy lifestyle. This past year, we have faced unprecedented need that hasn't been experienced since March to August of 2020. As families have struggled with inflation, most of our lines of over 60 soup kitchens and food pantries have saw a sustained increase in attendance, and 22. And that heightened level of attendance has unfortunately carried into this new year. On average, most pantries are seeing a 33% increase in utilization when comparing January 2023 attendance to the attendance just over a year ago. At the same time, inflation, supply chain issues, and pandemic-era government support has come to an end, and that has left our network with a decreased food supply during this very critical period. The largest decreases can be seen in those perishable healthy food items like protein, dairy, and eggs. The rising cost of food, which has averaged 12% nationwide, has caused the purchasing power of pantries to decline and the purchasing power of the donors who regularly support them. The avian flu outbreak, which has been the worst on record, has caused egg prices to soar amid a shortage of eggs. A once-staple affordable protein source for our network hasn't increased in price by over 220%. The affordable food resources are not keeping pace with the current need and the potential anticipated need. As one pantry provider said, "Everything has changed, and then changed again, and will now change again as our economy and our pandemic morph." Moving on to our next slide. The charitable food system cannot solve hunger alone. We are so fortunate to have a network of hunger relief champions, who are mostly volunteers, who make a personal commitment each and every day to feed their communities, no matter the challenging circumstances at hand. There is help for anybody who needs it through MONS charitable partners. Please visit our website to see our full Montgomery County Directory of Resources. Additionally, pa211.org or call 211 to connect with various community resources. Also, you can call the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services Community Connections Program to speak with an advocate at the number listed on your screen. If you are in a position to help, I strongly encourage you to donate your time, food, or money to your local food pantry. There is a QR code conveniently located at the bottom of the screen that will connect you directly to MONS' website for more information. For the month of March, MONS will be partnering with the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board for their first-ever Freedom for Hunger Spring Food Drive. The fundraiser, once again held exclusively online, will run throughout the month to continue to build awareness around the increased need currently in Montgomery County. The Food Safety Net system is not able to meet this increased demand for food assistance alone. We need robust government support. And MONS strongly encourages our community to advocate to our elected officials to continue to fund temporary emergency allotments and to make permanent SNAP benefit modifications that provide more resources to our community members in need. And this is one of my favorite facts to share, but according to Feeding America, for every one meal that a food bank provides, SNAP provides nine. In closing, I would like to thank the Montgomery County Commissioners for their continued investment in the infrastructure and resources that address hunger. Our network cannot thank you enough for your constant support, and it's just truly amazing when nonprofit, public, and private sectors come together how we can take a stand against hunger. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for being here this morning, sharing actually upsetting information, but I just want to emphasize, you said 7% of Montgomery County residents are food insecure. 7%. All right, we will continue to work, but thank you both for being here this morning and presenting. And now we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Ms. Francisco.
I need the list. Sorry. First up, we have Pauline Braccio, who has Agenda Item Comments on Items D, E, and F.
Good morning, Pauline Braccio, Townes and Township. I'm so happy that you're not reading those rules anymore, since they're all bogus. About the SNAP benefits that are being reduced, I find it really inconsistent with what is going on with the COVID situation, because although some people are saying, "Oh, it's over, and that's why people are not going to have that extra SNAP," the county is still pushing for tests and vaccines, and we already know that all of that has been debunked. Vaccines don't do anything but actually hurt people, and more people, I said this last time, more people have died, twice as many people have died from the vaccine than from COVID itself. And as far as the public comment, I put a letter up there for you, Josh. You sent me a letter. You sent one FedEx and one certified, but that certified letter was in my mailbox, and there was no green card. I didn't sign for either one of these things. So I really would like to know who forged my name for that to be delivered to me without my ever signing anything. And I'm still objecting to the two-minute time limit. It's really not enough time. You can see that I can only say a couple of words, and I'm sure that makes you very happy. And I'm also looking for an apology from Ken for calling me strange the last time, because you're saying in this letter that I had an outburst after he had his outburst at me, telling me that I'm crazy, because that's what men do to women when the women are speaking the truth, and the men just don't like it, and they don't want to admit anything. So I actually expect an apology from you for how you spoke to me and what you said to me. And then you can also apologize for the rape, which is really all I wanted when I met with you privately five years ago. Had you just told me what I wanted to hear, which was what happened, the explanation for it, and an apology from you, I never would have brought it up publicly. So that's on you. Thank you.
We will now move, let me just check here. We will now move to general public comment. We have Daniel Walker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was going over Americanship.
Could you just say your name and your municipality for the record?
I'm from Norristown, PA. My name is Walter Daniel Walker, Jr.
Thank you.
I was talking about Americanship, and Americanship should be rewarded to have a step-down king, not so much of the secret society of Guards and things of that nature, of hiding these ships of either which prophet that they're assuming their inheritance is from. And I see the German Shepherd in jails is only being represented by theirself. There's eyes of which feeds off of each other, which is that Siberian wolf of in USA and out USA to be united up states of beings. The 24-hour zone is United States Guards, particular watchtower. Everybody using the 12-hour zone, that's only a half a shift that's being represented. There's also teachers that's teaching grade school and things to that nature, that they should be professors only. Professors should be around, teachers should be in professors' positions, and professors should be in teachers' positions, because the comments is more associated with more knowledge. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Next, we have in-person comment for general public comment, Barb Furman.
Good morning, Barb Furman, New Hanover Township. Are We Safer: Top Five. Number five, children being taught that they may not have been perfectly made by God started around 2014, 2015, where money spent at the state level to CHOP and Planned Parenthood in Montgomery County for gender-affirming care as gender dysphoria is co-opted as a business model. Keep in mind, if we teach a small child that the sky is green and the grass is blue, that may stick.
I'm going to try to make this related to...
I said Montgomery County.
It can't just be in Montgomery County. It's related to county-related business.
That is, what's going on is county-related business.
It would be a matter of...
Number four.
For the Commissioner.
2020, shut down schools in person.
I would have to ask you to make this relevant to county business, something that would be small.
Did we shut down in-person learning in Montgomery County? In-person education in March, three-year anniversary coming up. In many ways, schools were the safest place for children. They were closed, and children were left without education services. Number three, virtual learning encouraging greater reliance on laptops and phones rather than hands-on learning. The developing brains of children were compromised, leaving children depressed and losing these years of learning. Number two, masks have taught people not to trust their natural immunity or one another in Montgomery County. Dr. Jay Batticario from Stanford in August 2020 said masks and school closures were detrimental to children's health. His Twitter account was shut down for that misinformation that has now been confirmed as true. Are the Streets Safe? I am hearing and seeing that Norristown is filled with homeless encampments.
Your two minutes are up.
Thank you.
Next, for general public comment, we have Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Townes and Township. I'm still waiting for my apology. You can send it to me in writing if you don't want to stay here, but you need to apologize to me, because Mr. Stein is pretending to be a judge again, and he's saying that I had an outburst. Whatever outburst I had was directed back to you for what you said to me. So, you know, did you scold him? I mean, you're still running the show, obviously, so you should be scolding your Commissioner as well. And when this letter says that you, I'm glad you're not reading them anymore, because you're saying that you strictly adhere to the requirements of the Sunshine Act. I've told you many times, showed you, giving you case law where it's not, and still you insist that it is. But then you perjured yourself in two different trials, two different times in each trial. You have impersonated judges through letters, and you actually wrote the decision for my federal case for Dr. Robremo. Yes, you think I don't know your writing? I recognize that. So, and I never even got a chance to be in front of the judge. All of a sudden, it was this letter saying, "Oh, you know, and I was not convicted of anything." When you say that I was convicted, you tampered with the evidence. Those judges were told to give me a guilty verdict by Kevin Steele. There was nothing proven at all, one time. So I was not convicted. I was railroaded. I just, that you keep insisting on doing these things is really an insult to everybody who lives in this county, because you are not a judge, and you keep impersonating the judge. And I know that those judges over there aren't going to do anything about you anyway. You know, Carlucco is running for PA Supreme Court. Please do not vote for Carlucco. Write in Paula Patrick. She's the one who should go on to the Supreme Court, not Carlucco. I'll finish five seconds, Harley. Thanks.
Next, for general public comment in person, we have Kelly Shippen.
Hello. Good morning, Chair, Mr. Kenneth Florentin, Mr. Miller Winder, Vice Chair. My name is Kelly Shippen, and I stood before you three years ago discussing my home in Royersford, PA, being taken away from my family, and I stand here before you again, March 2nd, 2023, and I am no longer in my home as a result of GAO. Montgomery County minority, and he is, and his counterparts chose to remove my family and I out of our home. In 2019, I was here within the presence of Mr. Lawrence and Ms. Allison Schwartz, and pleaded to you to help me, to no avail. Again, we lost our home. I have also contacted our local chief of police of Royersford, who told me it's under investigation. It is out of his jurisdiction. I have faith that there's nothing that he can do. I have faith, and I have been for over three years. Mr. Lawrence, you appeared at my church a few Sundays ago, and I don't believe it's a coincidence. You being there was a sign from God, and God directed me back here again to plead my case again. I don't know how or why, but what I am sure of is that Montgomery County took my home and my family's home, and it's been under investigation for too long, too long. Three years it's been under investigation, i.e. answers. We want our house back. Montgomery County taking our home absolutely destroyed me and enabled me from purchasing another. I want my house back. I am here because this can happen to someone else. And God brought me here because it has happened to me, and it's happened to other people that's lived in Montgomery County. If this can happen to me and my family, this can happen to another family. I don't want another family to go through this.
We'll now move to the folks that are logged in online via Zoom. First, we have Jamie Mogul. You can unmute.
Good morning. Apologies. Good morning, Commissioners, Jamie Mogul, Laura Marion. First, I want to commend the county commissioners and particularly the county's voter services for their continued accessibility efforts, particularly they recently put a direct lane... Particularly, they recently put a direct link for student poll worker applications, um, onto the website. Students can be seventeen and while not eligible to vote yet, they need to be eighteen. Uh, they can work and get paid by poll worker, uh, as poll workers. And this is an incredible opportunity to be civically engaged. Um, and we had over two hundred poll workers, student poll workers last cycle. And, uh, we at the League of Women Voters, uh, will do everything we can to continue this and so thank you for doing that. Next, I just, um, I know I'm getting short on time. Um, many of you know I usually comment with respect to elections. Um, but I want to talk next. I happen to be a board member for the food bank in my area, Narberth Community Food Bank, which doesn't just serve Narberth, um, but serves, uh, families all the way out to Lansdale. And I, this is another, um, and I want to welcome, um, Dr. Williams. And I'm so glad to hear about what you're doing to, um, because it's very unfortunate about the SNAP benefits being limited, um, and what you're doing to help with perishable foods because that is the greatest need, as I've learned. Um, we all know about the increasing cost of inflation with food, but those are the greatest needs. Um, and so thank you very much for doing that and, uh, look forward to helping people because food insecurity, we don't need to be blind to that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next we will go to Deb Spence. You can unmute.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Let me lower my hand. I, uh, I will talk quick and, uh, uh, wow, this is my first time at a meeting. It is really interesting. So my, my general comment is that there's a RFP that was issued on the Monco website for, um, single system in Pottstown. That was, uh, issued February seventeenth and due February twentieth. That's gives it a weekend to submit and February twentieth was actually a holiday, President's Day. So, um, that was really interesting. It also seemed like it was written for one particular company. I, I, I would like for the RFP not to be so narrow-minded. Um, but anyway, my other general comment is that I, I, I attended the Affordable Housing, um, um, how to apply grant workshops and I was promised to, to receive a call, um, from, I believe her name was Kaylee. And the other young lady, I don't remember her name, but I did not receive a call. I have a lot of questions. I'd like to know why Pottstown is excluded, um, in, because of some census grants, grant, some data that, uh, says that Pottstown has affordable housing already. Um, but new construction is new construction, the more the better. It's housing, um, shortage. And, uh, definitely I would like for that program to also be considered in an upside-down way. Whereas the minorities that benefit from the program should be the minority real estate developers and not checking off a box saying a minority is, uh, receiving the benefit, meaning getting an affordable apartment because that keeps minorities in, um, poverty and it's unstable. Like, uh, apartment can last you a year or two maybe, but a home can last generations and it can provide generational wealth. Thank you so much for allowing me to comment.
Uh, next we have Marilyn Muir. You can unmute.
Marilyn Muir, Lower Salford Township. My comments are in regard to Heart Health Month. When we think of strokes and heart attacks, we are more inclined to think of victims being elderly, overweight, and generally in poor health. However, as seen with Damar Hamlin, young, seemingly healthy athletic individuals can also be targets. This seems to be increasingly the case since the rollout of the COVID-19 vaccines. Dr. Peter McCullough is an internist cardiologist and epidemiologist managing the cardiovascular complications of both the viral infection and injuries developing from the COVID-19 vaccine, vaccination in Dallas, Texas. On January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, Dr. McCullough co-moderated and testified in the US Senate Panel, COVID-19, A Second Opinion chaired by Ron, Senator Ron Johnson from Wisconsin. Dr. McCullough has been considered among the world's top experts on COVID-19. The information I am providing is from Dr. McCullough's writings. In twenty twenty-one, the US CDC and FDA warned America and the world that the mRNA COVID-19 vaccines could result in heart inflammation or myocarditis. In twenty twenty-one, as spontaneous reports came into agencies that predominantly young men were developing myocarditis with COVID-19 vaccination, a pattern emerged. The highest risk group was males aged, aged eighteen to twenty-four, ninety percent required hospitalization. Risk was explosive after the second injection. Death directly due to myocarditis was confirmed by autopsy. In the biological licensing agreement letters to Pfizer and Moderna, the US FDA requested prospective cohort studies of myocarditis. Both companies were not forthcoming, so the answer came from Manchang, Bangkok, Thailand. Adolescents aged thirteen to eighteen were studied in a prospective cohort manner just after the second injection of the Pfizer vaccine. Twenty-three thousand two hundred fifty-six per million developed myocarditis.
Ma'am, time is up.
The data suggests death in young persons with sports and during daily life.
Sorry, your time is up.
Um, that concludes our public comment.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the approval of the minutes from the February sixteenth meeting. I will make a motion to approve the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Is there a board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. And now we will move on to our resolutions. Authorization submitted amended whole home repairs program grant application. Ms. Silver.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Uh, Kaylee Silver with the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, Administrator for the Office of Housing and Community Development. Here today to, um, ask for an updated resolution that is required by the state and also just give a very brief, uh, update on the whole home repairs program. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, the Whole Home Repairs Program is a statewide program uh, out of the General Appropriations Act of two thousand twenty-two from the PA Commonwealth, uh, out of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Uh, the program is available to all counties across Pennsylvania and will provide up to fifty thousand dollars in grants or loans to eligible Montgomery County homeowners and small landlords as defined by the state to address habitability concerns, improve energy or water efficiency, or to make units accessible for individuals with disabilities. The program also requires that, uh, our funding invest in Montgomery County workforce development programs that will connect trainees to jobs through committed employer partnerships related to improving habitability and performance of homes. Uh, and we are working closely with the Montgomery County Commerce Department in that area. Next slide, please. Uh, we were originally allocated, uh, six million one hundred sixty-eight thousand four hundred forty-three dollars to Montgomery County. And on January twenty-seventh, Montgomery County submitted its application to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, or PADCD, in that amount. Uh, we are pleased to announce that the state has now awarded an additional forty-five thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars for the program. So my request today is for a required, uh, resolution to update that total funding and our total allocation amount from the state, uh, to complete our application. Uh, you see the two new total allocation up there, six million one hundred sixty-eight thousand four hundred forty-three dollars. Uh, as I stated, uh, we are required to update our resolution so that I can tell the state and then that will complete our application and we will receive our contract from the state and it will take sixty to ninety days for us to receive our funds. In preparation for receiving that funding, uh, our Department, Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services is also on the agenda today asking, uh, for approval to release a request for proposals, or RFP, to secure an administrator and provider for this program in Montgomery County. Next slide, please. Uh, this RFP, if approved, would make available a little over five million out of the total pot, uh, to a sub-grantee. And those costs are for the direct costs related to the actual construction and housing rehabilitation work directly in the community as well as administration and staffing costs that it will take to organize that. Next slide, please. Uh, just also quickly touching on some early data work of our local need and prioritization we've done uh, based on the budget and funding that we received. And a reminder that a good portion of that will also go to our, uh, workforce development work. Uh, we are trying to, uh, equitably target one hundred to a hundred fifty homes to receive these repairs. Now, I will say that's a very conservative estimate. We feel really confident we'll reach that. We're just starting conservatively in the hopes that we will, uh, reach and exceed that quickly. Um, just some data regarding homeownership in Montgomery County. There are over, uh, three hundred thousand homes, uh, homeowner occupied homes in Montgomery County. Uh, we have done our research showing that targeting senior homeowners will help with cost savings to help seniors age in place and, uh, provide a lot of benefits to the community. We have over sixty-six thousand households, uh, who have a member sixty-plus and are receiving some sort of SNAP benefit in Montgomery County indicating that they are likely eligible for the low and moderate income status required for this program. We also took a look at the county's aging housing stock. Now, aging housing stock is a, um, problem throughout Pennsylvania. Approximately sixty-one percent of homeowner occupied housing stock is built pre-nineteen eighty in Montgomery County. That has some implications regarding, uh, lead abatement as well. Uh, this is higher than the national average of forty-eight percent. And, uh, this poses a higher risk for families with young children. Next slide, please. So you'll see here in the map, uh, both the shade of orange, uh, the darker the shade, it indicates, uh, the higher presence of more seniors who are low and moderate income status. And then the little house shape, the bigger the shape, the higher presence of, um, senior households in aging housing stock. So we are looking at this program to target census tracts in areas and municipalities that have a higher prevalence of both. Uh, so we hope to target beneficiaries of this program to be senior homeowners uh, at or below the required statutory of eighty percent very median income or below and who reside, are residing in a home built pre-nineteen eighty. And we will also be taking a look at some data around families with young children in aging housing stock and partnering with our very successful program in partnership with the Office of Public Health out of the Department of Health and Human Services, uh, for, uh, lead abatement and, uh, really coordinating across those programs.
Okay, I'm just going to motion on the table. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute and file the necessary documentation with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to complete an amended whole home repairs program application in the amount of six million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Um, Kelly, can you talk about again how many homes we think we'll be able to help with and target?
A very conservative target of one hundred to a hundred fifty homes within the next two years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, oh yeah, so we'll move on to a, um, vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. France.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, I have a contract renewal for our three-year community planning assistant contracts. This is one of the thirty-six contracts that have been ongoing that the county planning commission, uh, staff administers with municipalities uh, and provides general planning services. This one is for Salford Township and will be providing general flexible assistance and attendance and planning support at their monthly planning commission meeting. Uh, past works included the preparation of ordinance amendments for landscaping, outdoor lighting, and special events. Uh, I would just say that Salford kind of represents one of our smaller municipalities in terms of population. And, uh, we, they really rely on us for the expertise and the ability to guide them through the land development process, uh, as it occurs. Uh, they're also part of the Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission and, uh, we help with the implementation of the comprehensive plan for the Indian, Indian Valley. This contract, uh, like all community planning assistance contracts, are subsidized at fifty percent, uh, with municipality paying, uh, half of the total costs. And this specific contract will be renewed, uh, as of January first, two thousand twenty-three and run through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The total cost of the contract is sixty-four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. The municipal share in that portion is thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars.
Thank you, Mr. France. I'll make a motion that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the contract for municipal planning assistance outlined by Director of Planning, Mr. Scott France. And the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. France.
Thank you.
Personnel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, March second, twenty twenty-three with timestamp of nine thirty AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the March second, twenty twenty-three personnel presentation as given by First Assistant County Solicitor, Maureen Calder, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you. So O'Malley.
Yes. We have some RFPs. One, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for the Whole Home Repair Services. These successful responders will receive Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development COVID-19 American Rescue Plan Act Whole Home Repairs Program funding. The Whole Home Repairs Program funding will provide funding for a countywide program to address habitability and safety concerns, provide measures to improve energy or water efficiency, make units accessible for individuals with disabilities, and provides funding for construction-related workforce development. Contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated responders. Two, an RFP on behalf of supervision services for electronic monitoring services. These successful responder will provide continuous signal, electronic monitoring services with radio frequency monitoring, global positioning satellite monitoring, remote alcohol monitoring, and voice verification monitoring for parole clients. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montco PA dot org slash purchasing.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs and bids as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
One, contract award Recovery Office Compensation Model Study Services, Education Data Systems Incorporated of Dearborn, Michigan, two hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Contract provides for compensation study services to enable the county to adopt an updated, fully informed compensation model incorporated best practices to develop and deliver an updated county compensation model reflecting and facilitating county operational needs, including pay grades, calculation formulas, adjustment plans for future years. Recommended promotional models enabling the county to uniformly provide advancement pathways to employees. Recommended retention incentive plans enabling the county to provide best practice programs to increase employee engagement and retention. Financial modeling of compensation model, promotional model, and incentive plans to provide reliable figures for consideration in county budgeting. RFP twenty-three oh nine was viewed by sixty-six providers with seven responses received. Contract term will extend through June, twenty twenty-three. Two, contract award assets and infrastructure project enabling services, multiple providers. Contract provides for the establishment of a list of qualified engineering and architectural firms. RFP twenty-two thirty-nine was viewed by one hundred and twenty-two providers with forty-seven responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest-rated responders. Awarded firms will be listed under each discipline included in their response and will be approached as services are needed. Firms will provide services to enable continuation and completion of various county improvement projects within the following disciplines: architecture, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil, geotechnical, and structural engineering, surveying, construction management, cost estimation, historic preservation. Quotes will be obtained for project services, three quotes per job, up to a maximum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per task, not to exceed a total of two million dollars per firm over the five-year term of the agreement. Awarded list of providers is available at the back of the room. Three, contract award assets and infrastructure vehicle for Green Lane Park, Whitmore Auto Group, Mountjoy, PA, seventy-one thousand one hundred dollars. Contract provides for a twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Silverado truck with dump bed and plow. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract award district attorney equipment, I Miller Precision Optical Instruments Incorporated of Feasterville, PA, ninety-one thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars. Contract provides for multi-ocular comparison microscope for use by county forensics firearms examiners. Equipment is single source. Five, contract award information and technology solutions, project management software, E-Builder Incorporated of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Contract provides for the annual subscription fee for the E-Builder project management software. This software is used to manage and analyze county capital projects. Software is available through a GSA contract. Six, contract award purchasing, toner cartridges. Six, contract award Purchasing, Toner Cartridges Innovative Printing Systems Incorporated of Pottstown, PA, $75,000. Contract provides for toner cartridges for use by all county offices. Contract was competitively bid on, by Chester County on behalf of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Counties Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract is valid 3/1/2023 to 12/31/2023 with two optional annual renewals. Seven, contract award Security. Security Updates Integrated Security Systems LLC of Sotterton, PA, $130,245. Contract provides upgrades to existing class buttons to alert us at Willow Grove, Lansdale, Pottstown, Juvenile Probation, and Human Services Center with a three-year service agreement. Switches will be integrated into the existing county CAD system. Services are single-source. Eight, contract award Sheriff, Body Cam Equipment Support Services, Axon Enterprise Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona, $45,000. Contract provides for support and service for 30 body cameras with evidence storage software for a period of one year. Services are available through a NPP.gov cooperative contract. Nine, contract renewals, multiple departments, Title Search Services, multiple providers. Contract provides for title search and related services for Montgomery County as needed through the Planning Commission Sheriff and Tax Claim Offices. This is the first of four optional annual renewal terms as per RFP 2225. Awarded providers are Elkins Park Abstract Company of Porsha, PA, First American Abstract LLC of Fort Washington, PA, Diversified Settlement Services Incorporated of Bristol, PA, Allrose LLC of Pittsburgh, PA. Ten, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure Engineering and Design Services for the replacement of County Bridge Number 190, Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated of Pottstown, PA, Original contract provides for an engineering design firm for County Bridge 190, also known as the Keim Street Bridge, which carries Keim Street over the Schuylkill River from Pottstown Borough to North Coventry Township in Chester County. Amendment provides for additional coordination to obtain the necessary utility clearances for the multiple utilities attaching to the structure and engineering for updated standards and comments received from the PennDOT District Office. Next item is a contract amendment Information and Technology Solutions Wiring Services, Atlantic Coast Communications of Pensacola, New Jersey, $243,710. Original contract provides for a three-year voice and data cabling services for county-owned facilities. Amendment provides added cabling for inside and outside service and UXI sensors for the Wi-Fi replacement project. There is one contract and one amendment for Health and Human Services. Those providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
All right, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
For the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, there's one contract award Personal Protective Equipment Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated of Poughkeepsie, New York, $101,430.50. Contract provides personal protective equipment for special weapons and tactics teams and tactical medical EMS teams in Montgomery County during active shooter events in Montgomery County. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award Medical Supplies and Equipment Tactical Medical Solutions LLC of Anderson, South Carolina, $99,444.72. Contract provides for medical supplies and ballistic protection equipment to sustain the rescue task force component within the Bucks County Emergency Medical Services System. Supplies and equipment are available through a federal GSA contract. Three, contract award Augmented Reality Mapping System, Shotover of Boulder, Colorado, $248,000. Contract provides for an augmented reality mapping system and supporting hardware for the Philadelphia Police Department Aviation Unit. System and equipment are proprietary. Four, contract award Airborne Surveillance System Upgrade, FizLink LLC of Mount Olive, New Jersey, $283,000. Contract provides for an upgrade to the Video Downlink System for the Philadelphia Police Department. The Video Downlink System allows for aircraft video surveillance from two aircraft units to be transmitted to fixed and mobile points in the city of Philadelphia. Upgrade services are proprietary.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Any closing Commissioner comments? Okay. I will announce that our next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be on March 16th, 2023, and I'll make a motion to adjourn the March 2nd, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we will invite our Controller, Karen Sanchez, to the day as for salary board.
Morning.
Morning. Do we have any public comment on salary board? Okay. Ms. Calder.
Thank you. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, March 2nd, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:30 a.m. Of note, we have three employees retiring. Josette Marine from adult probation after 29 years, Valerie Parker from the Office of Children and Youth after 26 years, Sherry Domino from juvenile probation after 27 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for salary board consideration.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the March 2nd, 2023 salary board presentation as given by First Assistant County Solicitor, Maureen Calder, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes, and I believe we have a retiree acknowledgement.
Hi, Carrie, you can, you can speak.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Hi, good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak at today's meeting. I am Carrie Green from Health and Human Services. I'm a deputy administrator for our ongoing services at the Office of Children and Youth. I have the privilege of being here to talk about Valerie Parker. You just heard, she has been employed with our county at the Office of Children and Youth for 26 years. She began her career as a caseworker in our placement unit, and was then promoted to a higher-level caseworker in our adoption unit. Val was then promoted to a supervisor in 2004, and will retire from this position in the beginning of April. Throughout Val's career, she worked directly with families to effectuate change that improved the well-being of children, assured their safety, and provided them with permanency. In her role as a supervisor, Val trained and mentored many caseworkers, and passed along the extensive knowledge and skill set she gained in her years of work with families. The support Val has provided over the years, not only to her staff and the community at large, but to her coworkers, has been integral to our office and will be missed. Val has been an asset to our agency and to the county, and she leaves behind very big shoes to fill. We wish her all the best and congratulate her on her retirement, so well deserved. Thank you again.
Ms. Green, thank you for being here and presenting on behalf of Ms. Parker, and I'm sure the entire salary board joins me in wishing her well in her retirement, and thanking her for her service to the county. I will take a motion to adjourn the March 2nd, 2023, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board.
Finished.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1691.23]